We're good? Okay. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our meeting this morning that we're still going to wait a while before we start our official meeting, but this is this opportunity for us to celebrate the great contributions of three of our colleagues who will no longer be with us after this month. And so, we appreciate all of y'all being here this morning for this event as well. And I think what we'll do is we'll give board members a chance to say a few words. I know that there are some other former colleagues in the audience and some others in the room who would like to say some quick words as well, and the commissioner has some words to say, and then, of course, we will give them plenty of time. But before we get going, I know each of them has family members here, and I'd like, starting with Ms. Cochran, if you'd just introduce us to your family who are here.
I would love to do that. Thank you. So, here today, I have my stepfather, Charlie Reynolds. He's an assistant principal at Benton Junior High. My mom, Donna Reynolds, she's an eighth grade science teacher at Benton Junior High. The next fall will be her 41st year to teach. My oldest daughter, Maddie, who wants to be a language arts teacher because she loves to read. And Jude is in the middle there. He's bashful today. And Lucy is, she's our youngest, and then Amos is holding Lucy. So, really glad that they could be here today.
Awesome. Great. Mr. Black?
How are you guys doing? I'd like to introduce my family, starting with the ladies standing up. Laura and her husband Troy, Barbara and her husband Pickens, Darlene, of course, who I wouldn't be here without, and the rest of my nieces and nephews. Stand up. Nieces and nephews.
Ms. Wright?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair, Dr. Barth, for this opportunity. I'd like to think in these seven years, each and every time I walk through these doors, I do so with my family, and so to get to physically do so this time and to recognize them means the world to me. I think you all have met my mother, Amanda Wright, and she spent over 20 years in the Fayetteville School District. Retired a couple of years ago, and she is enjoying being a grandmother to my beautiful nephew, the bouncing little boy that you guys have seen driving around. And if anyone has any questions, his car of preference is a Subaru. Isn't that right, Jacob? Yes. And so, and he only likes new cars, so we're all in big trouble. And then I also have my sister with me, Claudine Specking, and she, Susan knows this well, works for Walmart and up there in Bentonville. And then I have my brother-in-law with me, Eric Specking, who I know I've mentioned him over the years, but heads recruitment for the Department of Engineering, University of Arkansas's Engineering Department, and is somebody that also is doing a lot in the state in regards to STEM.
Fantastic. Welcome to you all, and it is amazing how many years folks who are part of these families have spent in education, really centuries probably. So, thank you all so much for being here. I'll take, I'll go ahead and get things started, and I want to, of course, thank all of y'all. Ms. Cochran, you have truly been a stellar Teacher of the Year, and the way in which you have continually reminded us that all classrooms should truly be inclusive classrooms and that every student, no matter their background, should walk into a classroom where they are not just welcome, but truly celebrated, has truly been an inspiration. And you are one of the most gifted communicators I have ever seen. You really tell that story in a truly infectious way, and so, thank you for doing that. I know you are not done with that mission, and you will go on to continue that. So, thank you very much. And then my colleagues that I've spent a lot more time with, we've got longer relationships than a lot of other relationships in life. And, Mr. Black, I think we all know the last six years of this term have not been exactly what you envisioned, and I think we all, as a board and as a state, have lost because you were not able to always send your very great wisdom to us. But I think you have taught us, and taught me at least, a truly great gift, and that the true grit and determination you have shown in not just making it through this term, but continuing to thrive on this board is something that is one of the greatest gifts you could have given. And I think any number of us may face similar challenges in our lives, and you are a great exemplar. And so, thank you for your friendship and thank you for your time of service for the state of Arkansas. Ms. Wright? Thank you as well, of course. You've been my ally for six years. We've lost a heck of a lot of votes, but we have, but you have, I think we've gotten each other in ways that others haven't. We were folks that were not supposed to be on the State Board of Education, and I thank Governor Bibi for creating a State Board of Education that looked a lot more like the state, and I appreciate you being part of that. I think in particular, when you arrived on the board, too often, Latino and Latino kids and families were invisible in the education of the state, and through your dedication on this board and then away from this board and your other work, you have made that, we are no longer in a state where that is the case, is that we are a state which recognizes a bit more fully the diversity that we have in our schools, and you have been a big, a truly a big part of that. I think it's also, I want to celebrate this last year on the board. I mean, you could have easily, I'm chair, I've been chair, I'll serve out my duty, and then go off in the sunset, but you have worked so hard this year on the board, working on criminal and family engagement issues, and I think it's just a great example of using that wisdom to continue to do great work. And I know you're not done with that work either, so thank you for the example you've shown, you've shown there. Great. And I'll get started. Ms. Newton, you want to?
I want to thank each one of you for your service. Ms. Cochran, you have been an outstanding Teacher of the Year. I don't know why I feel this way, but I always feel like you're all my babies when you come after me, but, you know, just to watch you work this year and speak, and every time you spoke, you touched my heart. And so, I am so proud of you, and I can't wait to hear about what you're going to do in this coming year in your new position, but I'm proud of you. You've set a great example for those that come after you, and I know great things are ahead too. So, thank you for your service. I appreciate it so much. Mr. Black and Ms. Roth, you all have taught me so much. Mr. Black's wisdom, just to listen and hear, and I sometimes just like to listen to you both and just soak it in because I've learned from you, and I appreciate your dedication, and most of all, I appreciate your love for the students of Arkansas, because it showed from both of your hearts, and I think that's what makes this board what it is, is that we all have such great love for our students, and so, you really let that shine during these last couple of years that I was able to witness. So, thank you for your service, and I hope that this won't be the end of your service, that it keeps going, and we will continue to see the things that you're doing for the students of Arkansas. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chair?
I'd just like to echo everything Dr. Barth, Ms. Newton, and Ms. Cochran, you have really opened up my eyes to a lot of things, and over the last year, in the last two years, watching the Teacher of the Year, and I can see why you all were so, and the colleagues, and I'm sure you'll do a lot of things tweeting out, you'll be tweeting a lot of stuff with her over the next year and doing things, but I've been very impressed with everything that I've been able to see you present, and knowing that your leadership in the area as Teacher of the Year was definitely a position that you have held well and represented your profession in first-class manner. And so, I'm glad that we've made the connections and look forward to working with you to continue improving education in the state of Arkansas in any way that I can help in those areas you're working on to make sure that everybody has a voice. I want to be a part of that. And to Mr. Black and Ms. Wright, my two years here have been just an awesome time to sit here and learn, and Ms. Wright, knowing that you're a person, a voice for the voiceless, has been something that's true to my heart, to make sure that everybody has a voice even when they can't speak. And keep up the good work. That's what America's all about, to have an opportunity, and people want to come here every day for the rights that we have to live in this country, and we should never take that for granted. And to you, Mr. Black, appreciate you. Been a mentor for a long time, even when I didn't know you personally, I knew of you. And so, I admire you, and as Dr. Barth was saying, you have shown us true fortitude and persistence even when the odds are facing us. So, kudos to you. Glad I had the opportunity to serve with you the last two years, and I hope if I can do anything for you in the future, please let me know.
Well, Ms. Cochran, I too have learned so much from you, and it's so much fun to see individuals come into this role and to see the teaching profession and our students through each different leader. And you may have the toughest duty, everybody here may know, these are, in terms of timeframe, these are seven-year appointments, which some days feels longer than others. But I would guess sometimes it may be a tougher duty to have one year to come in and to make an impact, and we have been so fortunate because each of the Teachers of the Year that have come into this role while I've been on the board have made an incredible impact, each in their own way in different areas, serving students. So, we will miss you, and we will continue to build on what you have done. That is our commitment. And relative to you, Mr. Black, you maybe didn't have an opportunity to say a lot, but what you said, everybody stopped to listen. You added so much. We also conspired over here on the side, we talked, and I will so miss getting to sit by you because of the perspective that you've brought, and as we talked about out in the hall, that is the commitment, is to not lose the ground game and to continue to build on that. So, thank you. And Ms. Wright, I don't think we can say enough to extend our appreciation. While we look at this as a kind of a corporate or a collective, it is all about the individual passions and intellect and experiences that are brought to this board and its responsibility, and I think no one has felt the responsibility or demonstrated with more passion or commitment, a real love for and an affection and an expectation that we're going to do better by every student in this state than you. And again, we can't fill your shoes. We wish we could. We can't fill your shoes, but what we can do is to commit that we won't lose what you've brought to us, and just has already been articulated. You don't get away from this group. We will look forward to continuing to receive and benefiting from your counsel. So, to all three, thank you so very much. Thank you.
Ms. Wright?
I'll start with Mr. Black. He was my original seatmate, and I agree with you, Ms. Chambers, he definitely brings a lot to that, and he mentored me in the beginning, and I appreciate that. I knew of him through the economic development role, and I know his family is a very prominent family in the Newport area, and so, the opportunities I had to talk with him and learn from him, and realizing that his vote was not a vote that could be taken for granted because he actually looked at each issue as it came about, and so, you could not predict what he was going to do, but you know that whatever his vote was, it was in the best interest of what he thought was the best interest of children. And Ms. Wright, my little zealot. And the definition of a zealot is someone who is confident of their beliefs and pursues it to its fullest extent, and you, in fact, do that. But you have made an effort to always express that you are humbled by this experience and your opportunities that you have been afforded, and helping other young men and women of all, white, brown, black, Asian, realize that you are in America, and things happen here that, like no other place in the whole world, and that perspective and that zeal is admirable. And Ms. Cochran, you may not remember it, but we had a conversation when you were trying to think about, excuse me, go back into the classroom or go into administration, and I shared with you what was shared with me, which is, you can affect, as a secondary teacher, 150 children a year, or you can go in as a principal and affect maybe 400 or 600 kids a year. As a principal, you will be an exceptional instructional leader because you have done that in the classroom. You understand it, you get it, and the teachers will respond to that, because I think you will take to your teachers the same passion you took to your children, and the parents, the stakeholders, the children, and the teachers that will be working under you will be greatly improved from having had that experience. And I appreciated getting to know you and watch you and Megan work together, and Ms. Newton, all former Teachers of the Year, and what an exciting thing. I'm so happy that we started that program. I'm not even sure when it was. It wasn't going on a long time ago, but it's definitely a thing that is of high quality and good. So, I wish all three of you'd have a speed.
And I, two of our colleagues, former colleagues are here, and I think each of them would like to maybe say a quick word as well. Ms. Newton, you're up.
Thank you, Dr. Barth, for the invitation. It's certainly a privilege to come back and to see all of my former colleagues and new people that are here. I got a word for Maria and Joe, and it's simply this: There is life after the State Board of Education. So, understand that you'll look back with fond memories, but also you'll look forward to the work that you have to do. I can't speak to Ms. Cochran, but I can speak to the position of Teacher of the Year. I think it's important that we always have that voice here for the students and the families of Arkansas. I think sometimes, I'm from Crockett, and sometimes I feel so isolated. I feel like my head is down during the work, and what the State Board experienced allowed me to do with you colleagues, who are excellent colleagues, is to look up and know what happens in other parts of the state. I especially want to laud Joe for your brilliance around having us to look at economic development as it relates to education and importance of economic development. I think that each of us brings a special something to the board, and I saw that as your gift, when we look at how we develop communities and how we support communities and how important education is to economic development. So, you kept us on point in that regard, and I think all of us bring our initial concerns and gifts to the board so that we can never lose track. So, I challenge the Commissioner and the Governor to realize the diversity that this board has represented all the years. I think it's critical that we be able to represent all the citizens of the state. Maria, you are a champion. You are a, what's another stronger word than champion? You are, you pursue your beliefs, and your beliefs are what grounds us as a nation. You never let us forget the need to consider the Hispanic population, and whatever happens to one student impacts everybody. So, equity is equity, and it's simply that, and we cannot dismiss the need. So, thank you for being the champions and the stalwarts that you are. I know that you will take this energy on forward, and I thank you. It was a privilege for me to serve, and again, thank you, Dr. Barth, for the invitation.
Thanks. Thanks, Troy. Ms. Ledbetter?
Well, thank you, Dr. Barth, Mr. Key, and members of the board for allowing me to be here today. I just appreciate that you didn't put it to a vote. Ms. Cochran, I've not met you, but I know that just from listening to the board members honor you, that you've done a great job, and I agree that having a teacher on the board is such a valuable resource for the entire state, but particularly for the board to never forget while we're really here. Ms. Black, you know, it's hard not to be emotional, but I just want to say that your perseverance is really an inspiration, has inspired all of us, and thank you for everything you've done. And Maria? So, when I think of you, I think about the passion that you have, and so, you know, it's said over and over, the true measure of society is how we treat the least among us, and that's what you've shown. So, thank you.
Thanks very much. And Tracy Ann Nelson from the Arkansas Education Association also asked to say just a couple of words.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me this time. Good morning, Commissioner, I was going to say Mr. Key, Commissioner Key. Ms. Cochran, thank you for representing the value teachers are to our students and to our state and doing it so authentically. I don't know if you're aware, but Arkansas is unique in allowing teachers to actually have a vote and a voice on the State Board. Some states, you might sit, but you don't have a vote, so it's valuable that you do, so we appreciate that you've done that so authentically. Mr. Black and Ms. Wright, your wisdom and contribution have been invaluable. Students are better for your service in Arkansas. This job, or a lot of times jobs that are public service-driven are thankless, but they're critical, and we know how dedicated you have been and the value that you've brought to this institution, and it has been essential. Both Newport and Northwest Arkansas are better for your service, and the students of our state appreciate it, and educators. Maria, your voice has been so essential in the service on this board that we really value the things you've brought to the table and the items that you've brought forth. So, thank you, and look, best of luck in your next level of service. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Commissioner?
Thank you, Dr. Barth. The problem with going last is you can't really say anything new, but Ms. Wright, you challenge us, and you know that that's a positive thing for those with authority to be challenged and to have someone that is joining you in that work, that, you know, iron sharpens iron. So, you know, we, in the give and take that happens in the work that we do here, the value of different perspectives cannot be measured, and you have brought that these past several years and in the three years that I've been here. So, I appreciate very much what you have brought to us, to the department, to me personally, and it has great value. Your work, just within the last year or so, on family and community engagement, we are already seeing great fruit from that with, as we go around the state. So, thank you for that, and you're not off the hook. You're off the, maybe off the board. You will not be off and out of that work, because we're going to make sure you're pulled back in, aren't we, Megan? All right. Mr. Black, as I told you and your family, and it's been said already, you may not say very many words, but the words you do say have power and have meaning, and you're bringing a perspective from a part of our state that is in such need with respect to education and economic development, and we need other voices like yours to come up. So, it is my hope that, and I'll say this in front of your young family members there, that you are an example for our students, you're an example for the grown-ups in the state, that you don't let very difficult things that others might have allowed that to end their service, you refused to let that end your service, and I think your service becomes more powerful because of what you've overcome, and the value that you bring to me and bring to us, bring to this board, again, is something that our state needs, and thank you. Courtney, this past year, you have been an ambassador, not just for the department, but for the teaching profession. We are seeing a increase in interest in teaching. We are seeing an increase in young people saying, hey, I want to be a teacher, and I really believe it's because of the work you have done this year, built on the work of your predecessors, to say, teaching is an honorable profession. Teaching is, education is that building block for our society that is so important, and because of your advocacy, you have helped us shift the conversation. Now, in your new role, we're going to miss you, but you're not, again, not going to be too far from us because you, we're going to be right there watching you and getting feedback from you. You've become a different type of stakeholder for us, while still remaining an advocate for your students, and I know that you'll never leave that advocacy for the students of Arkansas, whatever their background, wherever they come from, whatever their circumstances. You'll be a little more targeted now with your district, but I know that you'll always have that passion for all the students in Arkansas. So, thank you for what you have brought to us over this past year, and we will miss you.
So, Ms. Cochran, the floor is yours.
Having only served for one year versus your seven years, I'll keep this very short. This has been definitely one of my very favorite parts of serving as the Teacher of the Year for Arkansas. It's an invaluable role and opportunity that's offered to the teachers in the state of Arkansas to have this voice on the State Board of Education, and I just want you all to know that you have stretched me in ways that I never knew possible, and I thank you all so very much for that. I can't wait to take what I've learned from you and apply it to my new position, and I also have some words that I will say for tomorrow and something for each of you that I will say for tomorrow, and so, if you're not going to be here, be sure to let me know because I would have given you that today. Thank you so very much.
Thanks, Courtney. Mr. Black?
It's been a good run, but like all things, it's time for us to walk away. I walk away feeling good about myself. I wasn't what I wanted to be, but I feel good about myself.
Ms. Wright?
All voices matter, and it doesn't matter where we are in our life or what circumstances. Every voice has value, and I can't imagine going on this journey with anyone else except you, and I have enjoyed it every single step of the way, and I'm going to miss you on a monthly basis. And also, to Ms. Cochran as well, I remember hearing about your application and seeing you go through the process and wishing and praying and crossing my fingers and crossing my toes that you would get Teacher of the Year, because I knew how much Arkansas would benefit from you, having had a chance to work with you beforehand, and I'm so grateful as well to have been able to do this last year of my journey with you, and then that your family and your children get to bear witness to this. And so, to that, I also have to say a few words to my family again, because hearing you all use words like passion, zealots, reminds me that that also because hearing you all use words like passion, zealot, reminds me that that also comes at a cost. And probably the biggest cost of that has been carried by my family because when you are as passionate and as zealous as someone like me, you're not always there. And even when you're physically there, you're not always there. And so, I could not have done this without my family, who supported me every step of the way and made this possible and let me find me in this process. But like so many have said, as we part here, now I do have that beautiful little bouncing five-year-old boy, Jacob. And I'm grateful to get the chance to be a better aunt to him and to see where that takes me next. But I do have, as I look across this room, both here and there, so, so many folks to express gratitude toward, whether it's my colleagues on the State Board or the Department of Ed or even the AEA, because Susanna and your predecessors, it's your fault I'm here, for better or for worse, it was the AEA who, after 10 months or less here in Arkansas, when our governor, Bibi, at that time said, hey, I want to see a Latino put on this State Board. And it was the AEA that saw that potential in me that I never saw in myself. And for any of you, if you've never had the privilege of working with Susanno Daniel, she's a testament to this state. And it's from her I know that Arkansas is really still the land of opportunity. Before we were the natural state, we are the land of opportunity. And there really is nowhere else, I believe, in this country where somebody could take somebody 10 months back and just see a State Board member out of that and find voice. And I don't think that woman gets thanked enough. And a testament now with her being at the AEA to all teachers whose job, day in, day out, is finding that potential. But I also have to thank everyone at the Department of Ed. I know I gave many of you all hugs. And I hope if I miss some of you all, I'll give more of you. My thanks to you is, I essentially grew up before your eyes. For those of you who've been here long enough, I came on, a 30-year-old, again, somebody believed in me, so that meant something. I had a vision, but I had never aspired to leadership or thought that I would take on a role like this. Surprisingly enough for those of you that are on the later part of this journey, probably don't know, but the first couple of years, Toyz and Sam would know this, I really didn't say anything because I was so afraid of my own voice. I think some of you all would probably prefer I go back to those days of when I didn't say anything. But I will say, it was the Department of Ed that gave me my biggest lesson in leadership. Sometimes you don't have to have all the answers to be a leader, but you need to know who to ask. And I just feel so grateful for the expertise in this department, for the time that this department and all of the staff have spent in educating me so that I could have a voice, to be so patient with my questions, and to really let me have this opportunity. Thank you. Because I know I made a lot of mistakes along the way. And with that, as I reflect on the year I was chair, and Dr. Barth, you put it, and the work that you've done this year with our relationship building and really inspiring us to really think of itself as a team, I came on as chair as a zealot, with a lot of passion. Like, I got one year, we got to get stuff done. And I am still recalling some of those late nights till 10:00 PM, maybe 11:00 PM, where I was like, no, we're having work sessions, we're going to do this. And you all went on that journey with me, and no one ever complained, bless your heart. And I appreciate that chance to try and do something and find my mark. And I feel like it wasn't until I was after-chair that I finally did with the family engagement. But I appreciate you all basically walking alongside me as I tried to figure this out and figure out what it means to have these opportunities. But I can say with a certainty that I have found my identity and my voice because of this experience. And so, the last comment I just want to make, because I think I'm leaving here as I look to my next phase as an advocate, an activist, or even as some these days call truth-tellers, right? It's so easy in this time as I see more folks getting involved, which is what we want as a democracy, more people getting involved, lifting their voices, sharing their opinions. But I won't lie, it breaks my heart as I see a lot of that truth-telling happening from a place of hate, a place of distrust, a place of seeing the worst in everybody instead of the best. I can single-handedly say that it has been my experience here on the State Board that teaches me, that lets me aspire to hopefully continue to be a truth-teller that is grounded in love, that is grounded in seeing the best in everybody, that is trying to be grounded in seeing the common ground. And all the times that you all reached out to me and said, okay, Maria, I don't know if I agree with that, but let me understand, right? And the forced process of us always breaking bread and ending our days on a positive note, which is what this is. Seven years, and Toyz and Sam can probably attest to this as well, there are some grueling moments where afterward you really don't want to have dinner with the rest of your colleagues afterward. But I appreciated that we always did. We always did. And we tried and we worked to find that common ground, even if sometimes that common ground had nothing to do with politics and was about our children or our families or my struggling love journey and all of you guys trying to give me great advice on that, still working on that, still looking for advice. But you all are proof, for our state but for our country. It is possible. It is possible in politics to get things done, to be grounded in the right reasons and to move forward. But it's not going to happen overnight. And it has to be meeting people where they're at and just being willing to go on a journey together. And you all did that for me. And so, with that, as the Commissioner said, I'm not going anywhere. Count on me, whether it's the Family Engagement Task Force, or I'm humbled that the Arkansas Teachers Corps has asked me to be on their advisory board to bring more Hispanics and Asians into our teaching pipeline. But also, don't be surprised if I come back, hopefully in part to celebrate some successes. I believe with all my heart, we're going to get professional licenses that will extend to our DACA students and folks with other immigration status. I believe with all my heart, we will celebrate the return to local control of Little Rock School District and of Dollar Way. And I want to be here to celebrate that. But also, don't be surprised if I come back to continue as an activist and activist, as we look at the implementation of ESSA and our subgroups and making sure that we really are doing everything to reach every child. And that's not just our Latino kids. Again, I want to put on the radar for the state, we are failing our African-American men, and we need to do more in the state to make sure that we are reaching every children. Because just as Toyz said, when we hold one group back, everybody is held back. And this state still has that possibility of a greater potential. And also, the choices of some should not limit the choices of others. And there's not a silver bullet with that, I get that. But we still have more I think we can do in that area. So, with that, in this journey, I thank you all profusely for being accomplices with me and partners and friends. And I will miss seeing you all on a monthly basis. But I know that we're going to continue this journey together because all of us, Arkansas is first. And we are grounded in our love for this state. And I know that together, we're all going to see greater things happen. So, thank you all.
All right. Well said. Thank you all for your words this morning. I think we are going to get, we're going to take a five-minute break. So, if folks need to transfer, that'd be great. We'll start our official meeting in five minutes. But I think we are going to get a photo taken of us. And so, we will take direction from you, what we need to do.